Good morning and welcome to City Hall. Dr. Kathy McCauley is with the Church of the Open Arms. She's here to lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Ryan if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Let us pray. God of many names, God beyond all names, we celebrate your presence with us here and now. We pause to give thanks for those willing to do public service, leading our city and working on behalf of our community. We ask your blessing and protection on their families and their homes and their lives. And we pray today that you would protect them from the blindness that can result from power and privilege. So be with us now in our speaking and our listening that this may be a place where justice and compassion meet. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the Hanson family to come forward. We recently lost one of our longest-serving city employees. Leroy Hanson eventually rose to the position of Fire Chief of the City of Oklahoma City, but of course, he didn't start off that way during a 40-year career. And his son, John Hanson, our former Assistant Fire Chief, is here along with the Hanson family. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Leroy Hanson was born September 15th, 1925, in Minneapolis, Minnesota, and passed away peacefully January 23rd, 2013, with his family by his side. Whereas Leroy, at age 17, enlisted in the United States Marine Corps and fought bravely for his country during World War II aboard the aircraft carrier USS Saratoga. He would later re-enlist in the Marines when the Korean War began. And whereas in 1952, Leroy received his second honorable Marine Corps discharge and began his career with the City of Oklahoma City as a forester. And whereas Leroy served as the Director of Safety and Civil Defense during the Cuban Missile Crisis and went on to develop Oklahoma City's first emergency response plan. Whereas after serving as Assistant City Manager, Leroy was appointed Director of Airports. As the Director of Airports for nearly 12 years, Leroy oversaw numerous expansion projects at Will Rogers, Wiley Post, and Page Field. Whereas one of Leroy's most cherished projects was the award-winning Aerospace America Air Show. And for all his hard work and dedication in that field, Leroy was inducted into the Oklahoma Aviation and Space Hall of Fame and was a recipient of the Oklahoma Aviation Lifetime Achievement Award presented by the Wiley Post Commission. And whereas Leroy was a community leader, a mentor, and a true public servant who believed in leading by example, his 40 years of exemplary service with the City of Oklahoma City and his faithfulness and courage in fighting for his country have left a most honorable legacy. Whereas Leroy is survived by his sister Joan, his son John, daughters Norine and Kathy, son-in-law Randy, grandson Corey, granddaughters Annie and Jill, and a host of extended family. Now therefore, the Mayor and Council of the City of Oklahoma City do hereby extend their deepest sympathies to the family and friends of Leroy Hanson.
Let's show our appreciation. As I said, proud department of the Department of Airports and a lot of other positions in top management here at the city.
Yes, sir. I think that, you know, certainly thank you and Council and our City Manager for honoring Dad with this, Mayor, and, you know, on behalf of my two loving, honorary sisters and the young lady who totally runs my life. I think the only thing to be said is, you know, I asked Dad at one point in time, you know, he was a World War II Marine and survived Iwo Jima, Tarawa, Sappan, and a bunch of those really tough places. And I asked him, I said, "Well, Dad, you were a survivor of some of the most fierce engagements in World War II. Why in the world did you re-enlist when the Korean War came out?" And he gave me a look like you wouldn't believe. And it was a point where, because, you know, that was the right thing to do, that's what you did. My country needed me. And I think that that's something that certainly helped me in my career. And I know the Chief and I talked about it on many occasions in some of the tough times that we had dealing with issues, you know, the Murrow Building and others, is, you know, we just tried to do the right thing. And I'll just close by saying, he watched every one of you. You know, he religiously watched the City Channel and kept in touch and was real proud of the Council and efforts that you've made to improve our city and do that thing, Mayor, do the right thing. So again, on behalf of our family, thank you so much for having us down this morning. Thanks for honoring Dad and appreciate the good work that you and Council and staff do.
Appreciate it. Let's show our appreciation. We'll move on.
Thanks, everybody.
I've just got to say a few things. I got to know Leroy as John's dad long before I got to know him as a department head in the city. And it was always a treat to be around Leroy. You could always count on two things out of Leroy. One, you're going to make sure that you understood he was a military veteran and he was proud of his northern heritage. And he was going to let you know what was going right and wrong with City Council. And Leroy had that ability to talk to you and make you feel like he's patting you on the back and everything is great and what a great supporter he is. And you walk away and you go, "You know, I think I just got reprimanded a little bit too." That was Leroy all over. But as John said, I can't tell you how many times Leroy would say, "Well, you know," on Council the other day, and he could quote to you what happened. So he was definitely watching it all the time. But it was a joy to get to know him and I know that he was a big factor in the city for a long time. And we certainly appreciate all his service.
I'm not sure my mic's working. Nope, it's going to work. Leroy was a good friend. Somebody that you couldn't be around him without feeling like he was your friend. And one of the things you failed to mention in the resolution is something he and I shared. We're both sons of Norway. And he's very proud of his Norwegian heritage, as is the City Manager and several other people here at City Hall. But I always appreciate that. I always got phone calls from him when we talked about things that had to do with both of our shared Norwegian heritage. And I always remember that.
Appreciate it again. We're on Item 3 of the Council Agenda. It's a series of appointments. I'll look for a motion on A, B, C, and D. Comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. Those appointments pass unanimously. On to Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for March 12th. And Item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for March 5th. Comments or questions on the Journal? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And Item 5 is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, on page 4 on the Consent Docket, under Item 6H, Castleback Crossing Two staff is requesting that this item be stricken from the docket. We're working with the developer who's working to complete the remaining improvements prior to the expiration of the letter of credit. So we ask that that be stricken at this time. And then moving to page 10, under Item 8D1, Item 8A, 8D1A, 2419 South Agnew, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item D, 805 Hoyt Avenue, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item G, 1838 Southwest 13th, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And Item K, 809 Northeast 28th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll recess to Council meeting. Convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are three items. All right, comments or questions on the MFA? All right, let's vote. Pass unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA. Convene is the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Again, three items.
Mayor, we have a presentation this morning from Bob Funk Jr. to talk about the Memorandum of Understanding with the Greater Oklahoma City Sports Consortium Association.
Morning, Bob. We wanted your name and address for the record, please.
Name and address. Bob Funk, 3512 Partridge Road, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73120.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you for taking the time this morning to let us come and share with you the information about the sports consortium and the MOU that we're pursuing. I'll wait just a second. We'll let the presentation come up here. You want to advance the slide. So the Greater Oklahoma City Sports Consortium, what is it? We are a not-for-profit corporation incorporated just a little over a month ago, formed by sports industry professionals here in the Oklahoma City area. It has, it began as more of a information-sharing project brought together by the CVB and Mike Carrier to discuss event schedules, different items, all across from the sports events industry, so that we weren't stepping on each other all the time. And we, as we went through the process for about a year, we felt like this was a really good opportunity to maybe have something formal, something for Oklahoma City that would serve the Oklahoma City community. And it kind of got us initial beginnings out of the Olympic Engagement Committee that was began, I'm not sure, back in the mid-2000s. And it was really a good opportunity for all of us to get together, share information. Its mission statement is to help enhance Oklahoma City's economy, image, and quality of life through the evaluation, development, facilitation, and growth of sporting and special events. I often get asked about the special events on the last component of our mission statement. And the reason we decided to put that in there is we're seeing more and more of sports becoming a lifestyle and different types of sports. Using the X Games as an example, it's built around a lifestyle and they become lifestyle events on a large scale very easily and very quickly where you've got a lot more than just sports going on. And so we felt that that should be included. Its structure is a 15-member board of sports industry professionals here in the Oklahoma City area. We try to be as inclusive as possible with a chairman, vice chairman, secretary, 12 board positions representing the organizations with the most vested interest in Oklahoma City and the metro area and the growth of the Oklahoma City area with varied expertise all across the board. And I think you'll find in a minute when we bring the slide up, you'll see that there's a, try to be as inclusive as possible and bring a wide breadth of experience across the consortium itself. We also added three at-large positions. We felt like any given large-scale sporting event, we would probably need to pull in a specialized group to address certain specific needs. And I use Barton Connor as an example, his organization. If we were looking at a large-scale Olympic-type event or something that involved gymnastics, we would obviously need to pull him in and bring about, bring his expertise to bear at the given subject and utilize him in that way and have him be a part of it. Because any one of these large-scale events is going to, the planning and process period is going to be, you know, years on end. And so we thought it would be best to have a rotating set of positions for expertise purposes. Each member has one vote. Our goal is to be an advisory committee and body, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute, to the city and the CVB and not just Oklahoma City, but Edmond, Yukon, the surrounding area, so that we can best advise them across the board as to, you know, should they pursue any given event, should they not pursue it, or should they pursue it with given caveat saying, you know, we should look at changing these things or pursuing it in this manner. Our goals would be to analyze the viability and feasibility of any large-scale event. So a lot of times, people come directly to the city to talk about funding, to talk about different issues for a city or for a sporting event or special event that's citywide and would take city resources. What we'd like to be is the vetting board essentially. So that the project would come to us, we'd be able to analyze it, give our suggestions, and then bring it back with a recommendation. We'd also want to be a facilitator and a resource for communication purposes to the body that is pursuing a event here in Oklahoma City. And I'll give some examples later on. I think it naturally fits that we want to be a part of the economic development body as well in helping the CVB pursue special events here in Oklahoma City, helping be a body that would help them analyze the specifics of how it fits into the overall fabric of the Oklahoma City community and how it would be best implemented within the confines of the Greater Oklahoma City Metro. And the last one is certainly not the least one, and it's how we all kind of got around the table, was to encourage collaboration, communication amongst all the groups. Too many times, you know, some groups are pursuing some events without really taking the bigger picture into consideration. And that's kind of where we want to go. So who are the members? As you can see, there's, I think, a great, all-inclusive body of members, including the City of Oklahoma City as well as the CVB, All Sports, the three professional teams, the Oklahoma City Thunder, the Oklahoma City Barons, Red Hawks, the Boathouse Foundation, State Fair, Oklahoma City University. We wanted also to bring in that university element, people that are very, that have been very active in the Oklahoma City area and developing, especially down along the river and the Boathouse area. SMG, who obviously administrates both buildings at the Cox Center and the Chesapeake Arena, and the Amateur Softball Association, who runs the facility out at Hall of Fame Stadium. So I thought, I think we've got a really nice, good, strong, broad base of expertise, many years' experience in the industry. So why is there a need for the sports consortium? Well, as I said before, we don't want to necessarily be an LOC. We want to be an advisory council to the city and the CVBs and essentially to really take in breath a project, help put together a bid process, and put Oklahoma City's best foot forward. And I'll give some examples. And we were all kind of sitting around the table seemingly about a year ago and discussing this very thing. And if, let's use the X Games as the example, and just from my own personal experience. About two years ago, they put out a bid for cities all over the world to bid and compete for the X Games, Winter and Summer X. And as I said in our consortium meetings, it came to me that we have been fabulous as a city to put together an ad hoc organization at any given point in time to pursue any event or anything that we wanted to garner for Oklahoma City's best interests. And we've done a great job of that. But we're growing to the point now where there's so much going on in Oklahoma City and there's just such a point of critical mass that we really felt like we needed to have a formal organization that could go out and address something like the X Games because we didn't have, we don't have that organization currently that could say, "Okay, this is what this looks like, this is what we can bring to the table," and put our best foot forward in that, in any given bid process at that point in time. And help us put together a really cohesive plan that gives us the best chance of success in that process and then hand that back over to the city and recommend an organizing committee that would essentially be the implementation group for that given event. We don't necessarily want to be in the event business. We just want to make sure that we're doing what's best and then recommending the right people for the job once we've garnered that event and brought it to Oklahoma City. So some other examples, I can give you is Pan Am Games. If, that's obviously a citywide event that would take up, I would, I think it was based on our estimates, would take up 95% of our facility space across the board. Edmond, Midwest City, Yukon, everywhere, stretching down into Norman. It would really, it would take up a tremendous amount of space for us to put on that event at any given time immediately. So, and that's a good example also of a planning process. That's a 10-year plan. We need to, I think, have a group such as the consortium that helps, again, put our best foot forward and make sure we're putting the right plan in place. So looking towards the future, Greater Oklahoma City Metro area is obviously growing at a very fast rate. I mean, we've seen it all over the news. We've had, we've had great success over the last 10 years largely because of our own investments as citizens back into the community. I think now that we're on the cusp of something very special and we've got the ability to take the assets that we've built ourselves and continue to build and really put a great foot forward to bring these major events into Oklahoma City through the resources of the CVB, the different economic development entities, and really have something special in Oklahoma City. And that's where we want to fit into the picture from that standpoint. That's why we're pursuing an MOU with the city, to be able to be that advisory council. And it's not just the membership board also. These are the leadership of the actual consortium. The consortium is open to all entities. It can be a member and be a free member, but in terms of the leadership, these are the entities and the individuals that are part of it. Thank you for your time today. I want to thank Mike Carrier, Tim Brassfield, and Jim Abbott. They've been the leadership that have had, their vision has really helped bring this about. And all the other members of the consortium have been very crucial in putting this together and bringing this to you today. So thank you very much.
Questions for Bob?
So the purpose essentially is to put a group together that will go out and recruit or put together a bid to attract new events? It won't be controlling existing events?
No, no. What it is meant to be is a, truly an advisory group. So I use the CVB as an example, I hope Mike and Sue don't mind. But when they go out in there, there's a specific event that maybe would fit for Oklahoma City. They could bring, have the ability to bring that back to the consortium. And the consortium take that and pick it apart from A to Z, evaluate it and say, "Yes, this is a great fit for Oklahoma City," nah, or maybe, "No, not at this time," or "Yes, but here's the things we need to do in order to make sure that we give this event, this special sporting event, the best chance of success." And so we're considering, we're considering all options across the board. So we see it as fitting a part and being out there as part of an outreach, going to different conferences, things of that, and the nature to be able to assess those at some point in time. So it will serve as that, but its main function is to make sure we're making the right decisions across the board as a, for the city's standpoint. It's truly, it's community service for the sports industry to an extent here locally. But no, we won't be messing with anything currently within the Oklahoma City fabric. We won't be addressing those issues.
Pat?
Just a quick question. Thank you for your presentation. It's really an impressive group. I wish we could clone this in several other areas. Education comes to mind right off the top. On the MOU, does it obligate the city to do anything?
Well, participate in the process and...
Does it outline how we're going to participate in that process? Are we going to have, apparently, there's no city representation on the board as it stands right now.
There is actually.
There is?
Yes. Mr. Mars has agreed to participate.
Okay.
And then we have a backup with Tom Anderson because we've all worked with him.
With Gary doing it, we're well represented.
One suggestion, if you could, hopefully it meets your criteria. The Oklahoma Coaches Association annually holds their All-State Games. And up until sometime in the early 90s, they used to rotate between Tulsa and Oklahoma City. Since that time, though, they've held it exclusively in Tulsa. And as I'm sure you know, it allows students from throughout the state to participate annually from all classes, both boys and girls. And I'd like to see that taken on as a goal to provide the facilities and the motel rooms in a manner that would encourage them to come back to Oklahoma City. I think it's us being centrally located. It's really a shame that we can no longer host that event. So I think that's, would be one of my suggestions to be one of the first goals, is to try to work with the Coaches Association to bring the All-State Games, at least on a rotating basis, back to Oklahoma City.
Yeah, I think that's a great example of just the types of events that we're, that we're, would be there to be able to vet and look at from that perspective, absolutely.
Larry?
Yeah, Bob. Appreciate your presentation. Just a question on a specific example. The NAIA National Swimming Championships were held in Oklahoma City. It's my understanding that OBU was the sponsoring institution and the host for the event was actually OCCC here in Oklahoma City. Are we positioned, I think Mike was also involved, CVB was involved in trying to get the next years and the future coming to Oklahoma City? Would that fall under your umbrella of action?
What we're, there is one piece of that in general from the amateur standpoint. We want to be careful not to step on Mr. Brassfield's toes in his association. So we're, we are trying to create a little bit of a delineation there on the amateur side of things. So there are some groups, some things we will look at, but some things, some things we would look at, other things we would pass on. That one, and we would have to take some consideration within the group to make sure that we're not, you know, walking on something that has traditionally been either Tim's focus or the CVB's focus.
I'm not sure Tim was involved. Were All Sports involved in that, Tim?
We were. I think the simplest...
Come on up.
I think the simplest is that we don't want to duplicate efforts, I think, as much as anything is what we're trying to say. And we do amateur events and only amateur events. The CVB has pursued those things. Obviously, the All Sports cannot do everything and can't do all amateur events. So the CVB was more the leader than we were on that.
Any other comments or questions from Council?
I would just say, you know, I hope this group can be a great addition to the sports market. I would hate to see it get into a gatekeeper situation where it was trying to keep outside investors or outside event hosts from coming into the market. So I mean, I think we're all going to, you know, kind of monitor and enjoy, but I love the coordination because we only have so many venues. There is so many dollars, you know, in the sports marketplace and we do need some coordination. But at the same time, we don't want to, you know, be keeping people out who might be of national recognition, who might want to bring in an event, so...
Absolutely.
We need to have our arms open to...
That's a great point. And I think from, to address that specific issue, we're a recommending body, you know, in terms of our, we're simply at the city's use to be able to give you the best recommendation from that standpoint. In terms of still the city, the city's decision as to what they feel is best, we're just simply recommending it and trying to bring some, just some detailed expertise to it overall. And I agree with you, I don't think we would ever want to see a situation where that would happen and that would hinder the growth of Oklahoma City.
Well, appreciate it, Bob. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Council. Appreciate it. Councilman Mars, thank you very much. Take care and have a good day.
All right. All right, do we have a motion on the PPA? We do not. How about a motion then? Second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA. Convene is Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Two items. Comments or questions on the EAT? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the Council meeting with the Consent Docket.
we, we want to be careful not to step on Mr. Brassfield's toes and his association. So, we're, we are trying to create a little bit of a delineation there on the, on the amateur side of things. So, there are some groups, some things we will look at, but some things, some things we would look at, other things we would pass on. That one, and we would have to take some consideration within the group to make sure that we're not, you know, walking on, on something that has traditionally been either Tim's focus or, or the CBB's focus.
I'm not sure Tim was involved. Were you, were you all sports involved in that, Tim?
We were. I think the simplest...
Come on up.
I think the simplest is that we don't want to duplicate efforts, I think, as much as anything is what we're trying to say. And, and we, we do amateur events and only amateur events. The CBB has pursued those things. Obviously, the all sports cannot do everything and can't do all amateur events. So, the CBB was more the lead than we were on that.
Any other comments or questions from council?
I would, I would just say, you know, I, I hope this group can be a great addition to the sports market. I would hate to see it get into a gatekeeper situation where it was trying to keep outside investors or outside event hosts from coming into the market. So, I mean, I think we're all going to, you know, kind of monitor and, and enjoy, but I love the coordination, because we only have so many venues. There is so many dollars, you know, in, in the sports marketplace, and we do need some coordination. But at the same time, we don't want to, you know, be, be keeping people out who might be of national recognition, who might want to bring in an event, so...
Oh, absolutely.
We need to have our arms open to...
That's a great point. And I think from, from, to address that, that specific issue, we're a recommending body, you know, in terms of, of our, we're simply at the city's use to be able to give you the, the best recommendation from that standpoint. In terms of still the city, the, the city's decision as to what they, what they feel is best, we're just simply recommending it and trying to bring some, just some detailed expertise to, to it overall. But I, and I agree with you, I don't think we would ever want to see a situation where, where that would happen, and that would, that would hinder the growth of, of Oklahoma City.
Well, appreciate it, Bob. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, council. Appreciate it. Councilman Mars, thank you very much. Take care, have a good day.
All right. All right, do we have a motion on the PPA? We do not. How about a motion, then? Second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Will adjourn the OC PPA convenes Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, two items. Comments or questions on the EAT? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Will adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket? All right, are there any individual considerations?
I believe that's staff, someone, mayor, and...
Okay, anybody else?
I had a question on him.
All right. Well, Skip, go ahead and get started then with item I.
Okay. This is a, an application from the Central Urban Development to develop a senior housing in northeast Oklahoma City. And my question is, staff, if, is this a, a loan or is it a grant? Both of you say that.
Matt knows a lot more about this. It is a loan, not a grant.
Okay. Well, I noticed on the, I mean, I think it's a great project as it relates to the purpose. These projects, as they come to the city, is it a precondition for them going forward to get the city's approval as far as the requested amount that they're requesting from us? So, the $225,000...
Well, the amount was negotiated. It is, it is necessary to get the city's support. And in this case, we determine that a loan would be the most appropriate leverage for the project, because we certainly agree that the project is a great project, too.
Okay. So, the, the return on the loan, it states that there's 1% per year on the unpaid balance?
Correct.
So, I guess I'm trying to find out, what's the time period as it relates to the repayment? Or is there...
There is, there is a repayment. What is it?
The repayment term is, is, is based on their compliance period. Typically, it's a 15-year compliance period, but they can extend to a 40-year compliance. If, the loan is structured so that if they refinance or sell, and that would happen at, normally for a tax credit project in year 15, that we would seek repayment at that time. If they defer, the loan is a cash flow loan. So, if they do not achieve a 1.15 debt coverage ratio annually, then they can defer. Or if they exceed the 1.15, then we will ask to see their financial health, and we'll look at what kind of cash flow they're able to pay out annually, on an annual basis. Presumably, they'll pay interest first if cash flow is available. If not, they can defer during the compliance period. If that happens to be the 15 years, then we'll seek repayment at that time, at, at a point of resale or refinance.
Okay. But they, but they do need the support of the city in order to go forth with the, the application with OFA, is that correct?
Yeah, the support they're seeking is called leverage support. That's sort of a term of art in the tax credit universe. They get points for their application with the, the amount of leverage that they garner. City source funds, the home funds, the federal funds are a legitimate source of leverage. OFA's rules allow for a loan structuring for the funds to count as leverage.
Okay. Well, I, I know that there had been some concern with the, some of the residents in the area, so I, I can see now that that's been resolved. And, but I just had a question as it relates to, I think this application, and there's a couple of other applications, that, to get some clarity, that coming to the city is one of the first requirements that they must get as far as a commitment from, from us in order to go forth with the application, is that correct?
They need a resolution of local support. They can also seek community support, which is another financial aspect to the tax credit program, or they can seek leverage. The resolution of local support is an absolute requirement. The leverage support and the community support, which are monetary, are discretionary, discretion of the developer. There are other sources of leverage or community support they can seek. But the resolution of local support from council is a necessity, and they have achieved that. They achieved that during their last cycle, which is good through June 2013. If they do not get awarded tax credits in this cycle, they'll have to come back for another resolution. But if the commitment of funds is awarded here, it'll be good for another year. These tax credit projects sometimes take two or three application rounds to come to fruition.
Okay. So, this is their second application?
That's correct.
Okay.
To the city, yeah, and to OFA.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
And Skip, you want to talk about item M?
It was, it's the, the Thunder...
It's a change order on the outside improvements at the Thunder Practice Facility.
Well, we, as, as relates to the, the outside...
It's essentially completed. I don't think we've finally accepted it yet, but, but it's essentially completed.
Okay, so this is just to increase the...
Yeah, this, this, it's a thing with the parking lot, added a cover for the, for the pool and a, and a couple of things.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, any other comments or questions on the consent docket?
We do have a presentation this morning from Judy Hatfield, who's here to talk about the Carnegie.
Good morning, Judy.
Good morning.
Okay. And we will need your name and address for the record.
Judy Hatfield, 2609 Fairfield Drive, Norman, Oklahoma, and at completion of project will be 131 D.A. McGee Avenue in Oklahoma City. I really appreciate the opportunity to be before you all today. Several of you know this project intimately, and I appreciate that. Those of you who don't, I thought I would give you just a real quick overview and offer the opportunity for questions if you have them. Anytime you're working on a project that has so many moving parts, there can be stalemates, there can be issues, there can be demands that you sometimes wonder the logic of. But as Babe Ruth would say, I think he said that it's really hard to beat somebody that will never give up. And I hope that's what all of you believe this has been by the time I complete the project. The project itself is the old Maine Library, located at Third and Robinson, which is actually 131 D.A. McGee. Originally, this particular project was built in 1901 as the Carnegie Library in downtown Oklahoma City. The land and building that are there currently were actually built in 1954. But I want to give you just a little scoop of how this was accomplished originally. A group of women, who were called the Philamathia Society, in the 1890s, went together and came up with $25,000 that allowed them to get a Carnegie grant of matching funds, and that's how we built the first Carnegie library on this site. This site has always been owned by the city of Oklahoma City, and I'm the first person to own it outside of the city of Oklahoma City, so you can imagine the abstract was just about this big. In 1954, actually starting in about 49, the year I was born, it was torn down and this product was built, which at the time was one of the, one of the most amazing modern structures in downtown Oklahoma City that you can imagine. It was actually called modern architecture. And if you look just to the east of the project, you'll see the building there is not the 15-story AT&amp;T building that's there today. So, that was actually built after the library was built in 1954. The plan for the project is a mixed-use project. It's actually five stories, because it has a basement, which I call lower level, being in the marketing field. So, I will have a lower level and a first floor, which will be office, retail, and any kind of use that the federal government allows when you're getting historic tax credits. The second floor will actually be parking, and I'm going to show you that in just a moment. And the reason for that is because it's seven feet four inches, and you have to have six feet eight inches to be able to, to facilitate vehicles. And seven feet four, you could just see what the, the height of Bob was, he wouldn't even be able to walk, walk in there. But the third and fourth floor will be residences. There will be 19 residences, and they're not, the floor plates are different because of how the windows are handled. If you look at the west facade on the building, that was one of the very, very important parts for the National Park Service. They did not want that to be changed in any way. They felt like that was really one of the major historic features of the building, although I tried to get another level of windows on the third floor, I wasn't successful at that. So, the only thing I'm going to have to deal with now is my Siamese connection that's going to be required on the west side of the building as a project of the new 180. So, those plans are going in today, actually, to get that approval. Just to give you an idea of a cutaway, this is a ceiling cutaway. So, as you're looking down to just get an idea of how a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom might look, you can see that the windowed part is where the kitchen and living area and dining area will face, so that they get the benefit of the windows. This is truly a loft development, so I'm not putting walls into the bedroom area. That will be determined by whomever lives there. Do they want to have four college students that are at OCU Law School or over at the Health Sciences Center to live together? They certainly can. And that brings down, obviously, the ability for what it costs per unit. But that would give you just an idea, and I think the pictures that you have are even easier to read. To give you an idea of the third floor layout, this is a typical layout. I've drawn in, well, my architect has, you know, the bathrooms, kitchens, walk-in closets, and then open living area and open sleeping and, and bedroom area. The fourth floor is a little differently, because they have the benefit of windows on three sides. So, the layout of that floor, it's also the most historic part of the building, because it was very important to the Park Service for us to maintain certain areas of the corridor. So, actually, when you walk onto that floor, you will see doors in there that were the original doors that were part of that corridor, in addition to the doors that we're putting in, that will facilitate entry into the units. One other feature of the fourth floor is kind of cool, is the loft in the middle, which we have as 411, will actually be raised. It'll be raised about 14 inches, because that's actually where the stage was, that was in the library. So, that will be a raised unit, which is kind of, kind of fun. And then the second floor, which is the parking, the entry will actually come off of the alley, which is a two-way alley on the north side of the building. Cars will enter. There will be 19 parks, one of which is ADA, and actually 18 parks, and then a 19th parking place for vespos, scooters, and bicycles that we will have there. So, that kind of gives you an idea of the project in general. I would be happy to answer any questions. I just do want to thank the city of Oklahoma City for the unbelievable public-private partnership opportunities. I couldn't have done this without their help and their support and their patience, and I'm very appreciative of that. The last two hiccups that we've had on it have been because of the historic federal tax credits, not the state, which is the one of which we were most concerned. Most recently, an IRS memo came out on Friday that determined there had been a federal historic tax case, that they're now tweaking one more time the way that these kinds of projects have to be done. U.S. Bank is my investor in my federal historic and my new market tax credits. And of the 45 projects in their pipeline, as of this memo Friday, 40 of them have completely been stopped. Five of them were picked to move forward and to move forward expeditiously, one of which is mine. That may delay another two or three weeks, but that's what their expectation was as of yesterday. So, that's what I wanted to present to you all today, and to thank you profusely for all of the, the help you've given me. Are there any questions?
Questions for Judy?
Judy, on the second level, where there's parking? Yes. I'm assuming that those are all storage units also? Those little ones are storage units. Thanks for asking, Meg. There was just a little bit of space left, and we never seemed to have enough room. And all of these, by the way, are rental units. That's a requirement during the historic and federal and new markets. These have to be a rental unit, so they will all be rental in downtown. And those little cubicles are storage units. Yes.
Got that.
On the federal government helping you, will that delay your starting date, your closing date?
As of yesterday, the expectation was three weeks. We were actually going to be closing this Friday.
Yes.
So, that little hiccup of Friday morning was okay. Now, let's figure out how we fix this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the federal funds or the, the tax credits, those were long before the, the federal budget issue that we're dealing with. You said there was five that were allowed to move forward, and the other ones were stopped?
Actually, for this particular bank. There are many financial institutions across the United States that do these kinds of projects. U.S. Bank happens to be the banker that's assisting me, and of their pipeline, 40 of these poor developers are stalemated at this point. But luckily, of the five that were selected, mine was actually the top one. So, I'm pretty proud of that.
The rental cost is there, are you able to say what the range...
Yes, sir. I'll be, I'll be happy to do that. I have units that are from about 725 square feet up to 1,900. The rental costs will be from about 900 up to 2,400. I'm at about $1.30 a square foot, which actually is under what the most recent apartments have been built for in Bricktown, the ones that are coming out of the ground today. They're a little bit higher. So, yes, we're a little bit lower than that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Anybody else? Judy, when do you think people could, could move in?
The plan is from the day we start construction. I have a 10-month period of construction and a one-month grace period. So, as soon as we get our occupancy permits, we have a 30-person waiting list right now for the units of 19. So, we hope to be able to do that by the first of March of next year, assuming it's really just a three-week delay with the feds.
All right. Well, thanks for your investment in Oklahoma City.
Thank you very much. My pleasure.
Way to vote on the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. That puts us on to the concurrence docket, just two items today. Comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We're on to item 8. This begins a series of items that require a separate vote, and our first, item 8A, is to assist nonprofits on their transportation needs, and this is up for a final hearing today. Okay, comments or questions on item 8A? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 8B, we're selling some bonds today.
And we are, we're just not selling them right now. So, we are taking bids on those this morning. It'll take some time to get those bids evaluated, and so we'd ask that these be put off into the, into the docket for later.
All right. Do we need a motion to move this later in the docket, Francis?
No, you can just order it.
Okay. Then I'm going to order it done, that item 8B, 1 and 2 will be dealt with probably after we get back from executive session, I'm suggesting. All right, item 8C is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item listed under 8C? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8D is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item listed under 8D? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8E, I understand we do not need executive session?
Do not.
Okay, motion to strike. Cast your votes. Item is struck.
No, 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 no. We approve.
Got it. Item 8E is a, is a motion to approve item 8E, and the second has been made. Cast your votes, and that item is approved. Thank you. Item 8F, I understand we do not need executive session?
We don't, but this is the item we discussed in executive session last week.
Comments or questions here? Cast your vote. Passed unanimously. Item 8G, I understand we do need executive session?
That's correct.
All right, how about a motion to move that to executive session? Cast your votes. Item moves to later on in the agenda. Item 8H is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on the item listed under claims recommended for denial? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Item 8H passes unanimously. Item 9 is claims recommended for approval. We have one item there. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? All right, how about, cast your votes. Item 9A passes unanimously. And that moves us on to item 10, which is items from council. Gary, you want to discuss anything this morning?
Well, I don't have anything, Mayor, but I think we've got a scout out in the audience. My guess is he's earning his badge for government or whatever it's called, is that correct? Won't you come up and tell us who you are and what, what group you're with?
I'm Andrew Webberford with Boy Scout Troop 276 of Dell City. And, yeah, you're right. I'm here to earn my citizenship in the nation badge.
Well, congratulations on your work. We always applaud the scouts when they come in and say, hey, did you learn anything about government today?
Yes.
Just that it moves quickly, huh?
Yeah.
Well, thanks for, for, for doing that.
Thank you.
All right. Before you sit down, Councilman Light, I wanted to say, since you saw you in the audience as well...
Andrew's my neighbor. He lives, actually, if you can have next-door neighbors in the country, he's about as close as you can get to a next-door neighbor. And as far as I'm concerned, his real claim to fame is that he turned me on to goats. I have a lot of room... I have a lot of room at my place, and he has goats, and I house his goats, so I get steam almost every day, and he came with me today. The only thing, the problem I had is when we came to council meeting together today, and we had rehearsed a little speech he was supposed to make about what a great councilman I was, and he just froze up, I guess, and decided not to do that. But he is, he's an outstanding young man. He and I did a little blitz along Southeastern 34th a couple of years ago and picked up tons of trash, and his father is a good friend, and it just, he's a fine young man.
We appreciate your attendance today.
Thank you.
Okay, Gary. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's nice to be back. Councilman Kelly and I, and you, Mayor, were up at the National League of Cities last week. And just to give the viewers just a real high-level, brief overview, there were a couple of general sessions that we got to attend, and at those general sessions, one of the things that came out was that there's probably going to be what they're now calling "common sense immigration reform" that the Congress is going to be working on. That used to be called a comprehensive reform, but they've changed the words to protect, I guess, the innocent. So that you can look for. There's also, as you've read in the paper, continued effort for some gun control legislation, and they talked about that quite in-depth. Got to attend a meeting that was put on for first-tier cities, and how that would fit in this environment right here would be for cities like Mustang, Bethany, War Acres, Dell City, Midwest City that surround a major metropolitan area. And the major message I got from that whole series of conversations was that across the country, the first-tier cities are going to be facing challenges as the inner-city problems that we're addressing in our inner city move out into the suburbs. The first-tier cities are going to have to be prepared to address those, challenges like the quality of the housing in the area, economic opportunity, safety of the residents, transportation. These issues are moving and changing the landscape, so to speak, of the first-tier cities. There also was quite a bit of talk about sequestration, and in our meetings with our delegation, we were able to address some of the impact of that. Two of the impacts that are going to be known to be addressed, one is at Will Rogers World Airport, where there is a move afoot to close the tower during the early morning hours, sometime after midnight to early in the morning. And then there's also a move afoot to close the tower permanently at Wiley Post Airport. That would be seven days a week, 365 days a year. Pilots would be on their own to land and take off. And our airport director has been supplying our congressional delegation with information about the impact of that, and maybe there are some better ways to accomplish sequestration than this. So that was on everybody's mind throughout the meeting. And then there was a very sobering video that was put on as one of the conference programs on the City of Detroit. And there were some warning signals that the City of Detroit had in bygone years that they seemed to ignore and went through, and the City of Detroit now is going through great challenges, is one of the greatest cities in the United States with a history going back into the 1700s, I believe. They are under very dire challenges, and in fact, last Friday, they had to be put under a financial observer from the court, I guess, to administer what was going on there. So there are warning signs that we always need to be aware of. And I guess one of the biggest ones, there's a proverb that says, "A wise man saves for the future; a foolish man spends whatever he gets." There seems to be still a reluctance in Congress to address the fact that we just can't keep spending not what we get, but more than we get. And they just seem to like to kick the can down the road, and that's just a warning signal that I picked up that really we need to pay attention to. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Larry. Pete, anything else? All right, David? Meg?
I did, just a couple of things. I'd really like to thank the George Kaiser Family Foundation. They were in Oklahoma City last week and presented a $40,000 check. In fact, Mary spoke at the event, but presented a $40,000 challenge grant to the Homeless Alliance. We had a presentation a couple of weeks ago about the 100,000 housing program, housing initiative, and one of the things I was just so delighted to hear from Dan Strawn is that in the 60 days in Oklahoma City that we launched this initiative, we've already housed 50 of the most severely challenged-on-the-street homeless folks. This $40,000 is to be matched with another 40 in private dollars, and that would allow us to house another 80 individuals. It costs about $1,000 per individual to get somebody into permanent housing. And there was a presentation from the very first individual that was placed, and his story was so heartwarming, and he spoke to the fact that, for the first time in years, he actually has responsibilities, and, you know, how he's enjoying them and how they're making him feel like he's a real person again and a whole person. He has neighbors, and he has trash to take out, and things that seem so simple to us but really make a difference in people's lives. So that was a wonderful gift. And I think Councilman McAtee yesterday was with County Commissioner Brian Mon, added a site. It's just a terrible disaster in Ward 6, covered with concrete that was left over from highway demolition, and his SHINE program is working very hard to clean that back up along with other city staff. And so I want to thank Commissioner Mon for his work on the SHINE program, particularly in addressing a really difficult situation.
All right. Skid?
Yes, I would just like to get over the comments that was made by Councilman McAtee in reference to our attendance at the National League of Cities. One of the projects the City of Oklahoma City has, as Meg was just stating, the Homeless Alliance campus. I had followed diligently to try to get some national attention as it relates to the program with the National League of Cities, and unbeknownst to me, I was arguing with one of the program chairmans and telling them how I thought that they were being very disrespectful to our request. And he says, "Councilman Kelly, we ran it. We really did run it." So we received national attention with the National League of Cities on our Homeless Alliance. I received a call yesterday from the Youth and Families Program that I serve on the board with, and they were very much interested in doing some follow-up information as it relates to the benefits that our veterans are receiving in Oklahoma City as a result of the great work of the Homeless Alliance Project. And so we'll be communicating back with the National League of Cities in reference to that, and just want to thank them for the great work that they have done in that it has received some national attention throughout the United States as it relates to our accomplishments and work towards the homeless. Councilman McAtee did not share with you that. He and I sat at the closing luncheon together, and at the luncheon, we had a presentation by Congressman McCain, J.C. Watts, and of course, J.C. Watts gave probably one of the most inspirational messages that you could ever hear about how we, as Americans, need to come back together and realize that our public service is not for us as individuals, but for the better, good of all the citizens in our society. And that goes to every social issue and every major political policy that one could think of, and that the way we are divided today is really shameful of what this country was founded on. And of course, with Congressman McCain talking about the issue of immigration, which brought a different view about how we need to look at our immigration policy in America with some common sense. But then the person that lit the stage up was the Vice President of the United States in reference to some of the social issues and the shootings of those young children. And so it was a great engagement of dialogue and policymaking conversations. Our congressional delegation was very open to our concerns for the City of Oklahoma City, and especially as we continue to battle this issue of the fair market, internet sales. So we had an opportunity to speak with each one of the congressional offices and explain to them the Oklahoma's concern, and it was very well-received. So it was a great meeting, probably one of the best NLCs that I have attended. Thank you.
Pat?
Your Honor, a couple of weeks ago, I made a comment about the condition of the replacement of the sidewalks vicinity of the Civic Center Music Hall. I wanted to thank city manager and city staff for listening to my concerns and doing a great job to get those back in shape. I do appreciate that. And a real test will be Friday night when we have the first night concert there. So thank you.
I'll note, I heard attendance figures at the zoo that were quite impressive. 10,000 were out there on Friday, 14,000 went out on Saturday, a little bit of spring fever created. Looks like it might have some exciting weather coming back this weekend, but it's nice to see people are ready to get out there and support the zoo, because they've made so many improvements over the last few years. Want to say anything?
I just want to remind Council that after executive session, you do need to come back because we do need to award the bids vigorously, and I know that, and they're just about ready, but they're not quite ready.
Okay. Nothing really from city manager reports? All right, citizens to be heard? All right, we have executive session. We'll be back.
Okay, so if I've got John Williams, Madison Coby, and Craig at the end of the room, and Johannes in the room, who's bringing the information to the council?
Kenny.
Kenny.
He's standing at the copier.
He wouldn't let us see him touch it.
That's right. He actually said, "That's right." He would not let anyone touch it. He said, "This is my version of document."
Which is good.
Okay. I don't know if I'm in charge.
Problem.
We came over yesterday to make sure everything worked.
Hot off, that's a proverbial hot off the press.
Ready?
We have returned from executive session. The council is going to now consider item eight A and eight B, and I'll turn it over to the city manager to get the results of the bond sale.
Craig Freeman is here. The documents have been passed out before you as we consider eight B one and eight B two.
All right. All right. We had an excellent bid this morning. We had seven bidders. The winning bid was Robert W. Barrett &amp; Company at a true interest cost of $2.662998. The second lowest bid then was Morgan Stanley at $2.689. And so, very close margin there and very good bids. Best ones we've had in a very, very long time. Could be of all time. We aren't positive of that. But most likely it is. And so, these are very good 20-year bonds, $90 million bond sale. And so, it's a very good representation for the city. I do want to recognize our financing team. Kenton Sudle is our Assistant Finance Director. He's our debt manager. Joanna McSpadden is with the Office of Management and Budget. And then, John Williams is legal counsel. And then, Gary Bush. And then, we have with Public Financial Management, we have Dennis Whaley. And we have Colby Echols. And so, appreciate all of the work they've done. This really is an expression of the AAA rating, the strength that we have, the leadership of the council, the hard work and dedication of many city employees who contribute to this, and just the benefits of the market that we're in right now. So, it's a very good bid for us.
Comments or questions for staff on the bond sale? Yeah, David.
Craig, could you speak about the company, Robert W. Barrett &amp; Company, just a little bit? I mean, they're perhaps not as well-known or commonly known as, say, Morgan Stanley is. So, their ability to effectively sell this bond issue.
Yes.
Could you just visit about that for a second?
I mean, basically, anyone who has... I mean, they're taking this bid with the bonds basically sold. Now, they'll complete the sales after our sale is completed and the award is completed. But they've got these arranged already when they come forward. They put up a good faith deposit to ensure that they'll sell the bonds and very confident in this company.
Any other comments or questions? Yeah, Larry.
One question. These are tax-free munis?
Yes, they are. Tax exempt.
Okay. And I hope council is all aware there is a proposal before Congress to take away the tax-free muni status on municipal bonds. So, if that were to occur and we were to have another bond offering, the interest rate that we'd have to pay would be somewhat higher.
Yes, it would. It would increase the debt and either put us in a position that we would be able to do fewer projects or that we would have to increase the tax rates. It'd be... Put us in a tough position.
Well, Craig, you and I have discussed this previously. But if it went to 28 percent, about how much difference would there be on a $90 million bond sale?
On the bond sale, on the $90 million bond sale, it'd be about $7 million over the life of the bonds would be the cost on the $90 million bond sale. So, it'd be about $350,000 a year average. It wouldn't be exactly that amount each year because of the way that we pay off our debt. But it'd be about a $7 million impact if it was a 28 percent cap. It's just the estimated impact. And Kenny pointed out too that Robert W. Barrett has won three of our last five bids.
Oh.
Yes.
Yes, Skip.
Greg, did you say that this was one of the best sales that we have experienced?
Yes. Yes. And part of it's a reflection of the market that we're in right now. I mean, last year was right at three. The water bonds sold just a few weeks ago, right at three. And so, part of it's the market being a AAA credit puts you in a better position as well. But it's really mostly a reflection of the market that we're in right now.
Okay. Thank you.
I always love this day. I love getting them hot off the press. It's really exciting. And you're just so all to be congratulated. I mean, it's really... We talked about it a couple of weeks ago with the rating confirmations. But it really just speaks so well to what's going on in Oklahoma City. And everybody should be very proud of this. I said, "Sell more."
When these companies are this close, do they go back and negotiate? Is this just where they...
And it's a sealed bid. When the competitive deal is a sealed bid, it comes in, we open to it at nine o'clock and just, you know, evaluate the bids.
Oh.
All right. How about a motion then on item 8B1? All right. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. How about a motion on item 8B2? Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. We also need the emergency on item 8B2. Cast your votes. And it passes unanimously. Thank you all very much.